Twenty nineteen. Ask if you have a cellphone, please turn it off or silence it during the meeting. Ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Ms. Domingo, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Clark, Reed, Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Edgerton.
Here. So, first item is approval of the agenda, and I request that one item be added to the agenda, and that is just to observe a moment of silence for the individual that was shot and killed in the early hours of Saturday, tragic and senseless death. Our prayers go out to his family. Are there any other modifications or changes to the agenda? Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. No modifications. What were you suggesting we add at the moment?
Right after we get the agenda approval, pause and...
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified to add a moment of silence?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So with that, please join me in observing a moments of silence in remembrance of the young man who was shot and lost his life on Saturday morning and leased behind children, family, and it's a tragedy. Thank you. First is a presentation by the Calhoun County Land Bank on the demolition of Union Steel, the building.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Krista Trout Edwards with the executive, I'm the executive director of the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority, and I'm just going to do a short presentation. We have been trying to get Union Steel demolished for a very long time. A lot of the issue has to do with funding. There's not funding for industrial buildings, and there's no funding with the DEQ or the EPA, so we went ahead and put it out for bid this summer, hoping that we could partner with the city to do the demolition, so I just want to talk a little bit about that. Where do I point this thing? This is the shortest presentation ever. Ah, there we go. Is that, was that you or was that me? Okay. So, no, I didn't make it work. I'm so just going to cover a couple of things. I'm going to give a brief overview of the land bank for those who do not know us, talk a little bit about what we've done evolution-wise in the city of Albion, the grants that we've worked on here, some of our large-scale projects, Union Steel highlights, and then some of our other, the expenses at the land bank or the treasurer has incurred in the city, and then sites that we have in our inventory that really need attention. And so part of this is balancing between a demolition project and other buildings that need some sort of intervention, so we don't have to demolish them later. So that's kind of where, those are our pieces of the puzzle that we're looking at. So this is just a timeline. The land bank started in two thousand seven, really formalized in two thousand eight. From then until about two thousand thirteen, we didn't do a ton of work. We were really a repository for properties. We held a lot of properties. We did one-off demolitions in the city of Albion, where we would work with John Tracy and prioritize foreclosures that came through. So for those of you who don't know, we get our properties through the tax foreclosure process, and with me tonight is Brian Winsour. He serves as county treasurer, and he also serves as our board chair. So when the treasurer's office forecloses on a property, they try and auction it. If it doesn't sell, it comes to the land bank, so we get them by default, whether we want them or not, and then we try and activate those properties or do something with them. Sometimes they need demolition, sometimes they need rehabilitation, and sometimes they just need help until we can find a project for them or a way to dispose of them that will benefit the community. Our first grant in the city of Albion was in two thousand fourteen. It was a CDBG grant for demolition, and that was actually a partnership with the city of Albion, the land bank, the county treasurer, and Emmett Township, and that was the first time that we were able to bring some funding into the city to address the residential blight that had occurred after the housing crisis. In two thousand fifteen, we started our Transform This Home project. We also had our first big intervention on a project here in Albion, and that was the former barbecue downtown. It's next to Lopez's and Dickerson. It actually sits in between those two structures, and what happened was the second story had collapsed into the first story, so we needed to stabilize that structure, and what we did is we put a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars into it and tied the building together. And we, you can't walk in that building, but we needed to stabilize it, and that was what we could afford to do with our funding at the time. We also did the Little Lambs of Jesus project, so that daycare center was something that came through the land bank. We did a target market analysis grant for the downtown here to do a residential housing study in the area, just for downtown. In two thousand sixteen, we started working with the Vista program. We also brought in the Hardest Hit Funds demolition, and that was a four million dollar grant. Part of that has been spent here, obviously not all of it has been spent here, and all of these grants for demolition are for residential structures, and that's kind of the issue. We've been vocal at the state level that we need to have some funding for other types of structures, but have not been successful as of yet. In two thousand seventeen, we did the Albion Community Gardens. We demoed the Darwimpel School, which we had a lot of help from, from the treasurer's office. We continued those other residential demolitions, and we started working with some local groups to help maintain some of our properties through our neighborhood mow and maintenance program. In two thousand eighteen, we secured American Qualoid Stadium in the community by doing a long-term lease and insuring an investment out at the Harvard Industries site, and we also brought some grant funds in through Chemical Bank to work on some of our buildings This is just displayed in a different way. It has some of the monetary aspects of those grants there, and I will say that some of these grants required a local match, and Albion did assist us with those local matches. In the CDBG grant, we had to have a twenty-five percent local match, so Albion and Emmett Township, the treasurer and the land bank all pitched in. On the HHF, HHF grant, there was also a twenty-five percent local match, and you can see up there that we split that between Albion and the land bank, and it goes on down the line. So you have worked with us in many phases, but there have been many other costs that we've incurred on some larger sites. This is large-scale projects, non-residential. You can see we've got five of them on this list that were land bank-owned, and three of those projects have occurred in the city of Albion, and part of that is just there's a lot of post-industrial property here and a lot of difficult projects that we get through tax foreclosure in the city. So this is Union Steel. I feel like it needs no introduction. If ever you're giving a talk about something and you didn't really need to talk about your subject, I feel like this building is it. It's in a state of collapse. We did do a structural engineer assessment of it earlier this year, and it was recommended to us that we do demolish it. We went ahead and got our bids this summer. They ranged from four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, so it was quite a range. The bid that came in low is a demolition contractor that we've used before and somebody that we trust and somebody that's actually worked in the city of Albion before on some difficult demolitions, so we feel like it's a really good bid, and we are, we are pleased with that result. Here's a timeline of this particular structure. It first came through foreclosure in two thousand eight. It sold at auction. It came back through foreclosure at two thousand eleven. It sold at auction. After two thousand eleven, there was a change in the way that the auctions were run, so this property did not sell when it came back through foreclosure in two thousand fourteen. But that was after the structure was urban mined by its private owner. There were some drums in the property that were tipped over, and some asbestos was exposed. This was way back in two thousand twelve, so the EPA had to come out when it was in private ownership and do an, do an action there, and they took care of that contamination. Two thousand fourteen, it came through foreclosure, and the then-county treasurer wanted to make sure that it did not go back into the foreclosure cycle, so it came to the land bank, and we've been working since then to figure out how to tear it down. That's, it's, has been an ongoing process. This year, what we've been doing is we've been taking our environmental assessment grant we have through the EPA, and we've been doing some studies out there. We've done a phase one. I think it's tomorrow that they're actually going out and taking soil samples and doing the phase two to find out what's in there. That does affect the demolition process, if it is contaminated, or is there something that we need to do? It's called a do-care, so we might have to treat it a little bit differently. We've run into it on other sites. It's not typically a huge deal, but it does inform how we do the demolition. One of the things that we've noticed in the area around using Union Steel is we've seen more foreclosure and more demolitions, so everything on here in a hatched orange is something that's been demolished. There's other demolitions that we have not done, but I think that this map speaks to the impact that this building is having on the area. It is decreasing property values. It is unsafe. There are multiple people here who, like me, get complaints about it on a regular basis, and it is a safety concern. So some of the things we deal with are graffiti. Some of it's dumping, some of it's breaking and entering. It can happen anytime. We're out there monthly dealing with something at the site. Trying to keep it secure has been tricky. Folks do like to go in there and, and do whatever, so, you know, I get calls on the weekends, you know, and then I call Albion Public Safety, so it's something that we would like to address if possible. So when I talk about some of the other projects that we've done, I just wanted to introduce you to a few of those. This is the barbecue building, and it is actually one-third of the building that also has Lopez's and the Phoenix Restaurant. We put a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars into it. Albion did help back in, in two thousand fifteen with some of the engineering work, and that was around five thousand dollars. It's got some falling brick in the back, and of course you can't enter it, so we do need to do something to it. I've talked to the state multiple times and other folks about it and haven't really gotten any, any assistance, but, you know, it's something that is constantly on our mind. This is two hundred South Superior. It's where the old subway was. It's now part of the hotel. It came through foreclosure with this massive crack in the wall, and bricks were falling down, and it's at the, so it's right across from Cascarelli's, so it's on the corner of Superior, and it was very dangerous. The county treasurer took it down. We managed the demolition, and so we were able to do that and, and, and tell it to the, to the hotel to become part of that, not for a lot, but for something. This is Darwimpel School. The county treasurer put about two hundred and sixteen thousand in it. The land bank wrote and received a grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand to do this demolition, and then we managed that process. This was something that the treasurer held on to because he was in a better position to address the needs of the property. We eventually transferred it to the city of Albion after we used our EPA grant to make sure that the city received liability protection, so the city now owns this site.
And it turned out to be a beautiful piece of property, especially after getting that lot of stuff down.
So this is my late-in-the-day LA Oop shot. There's lots of other costs, lots of other costs that we do. Boarding and securing, over the last couple of years, the treasurer's spent just under twelve thousand, and the land bank, in the last five years, has spent seventy-four thousand dollars on boarding and securing and lawn mowing. This right here has the wrong address on it, but it's on North Albion Street. I believe it's seven oh two. It's the old Motorcycle Club, is that right, Marcola? Is that the biker club? So, so, I believe that's what Marcola told me.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah. So this currently is in, it's in foreclosure. It's owned by the county treasurer. It's a twenty-seven thousand dollar demo. It's got a collapsing wall, and the treasurer is taking this down, and the land bank is doing the, doing the project management for it. So it's coming down this year. It's, the contract is signed, but it's, you know, it's something that we believe is dangerous and needs to come down, needs addressed. That is Austin School. So we have put this out for RFP for redevelopment a couple of times. One of the issues has been the environmental. We didn't have any data on the environmental. That's been a big challenge for us in redevelopment in the city of Albion, so we are addressing that on the site with our EPA grant. We have completed or almost completed the phase one, and we do have some money set aside if we need to do a phase two. One of the big concerns was whether or not there was a fuel tank there. Right now, there isn't any confirmed fuel tank, but we're hoping that through the phase one EPA, we'll find that out, and we have had fuel tanks show up on other properties this year, so it could happen. But it's very difficult to get that property to an investor. So you'll recognize the building on the right is the barbecue place. The buildings on the left are the old tattoo, the office space in one twenty-nine. For the longest time, these were owned by different individuals, and they came through tax foreclosure at different times, and one of the things we wanted to do was try to put them back together. We were working with a developer on this site. It fell through, so we decided that we would use our EPA assessment grant to do the phase one, and then if we needed to do any phase two, and now we found out that there is some material in the floor, the basement of the tattoo parlor, that needs to be removed before we can sell it, and our current estimate from a contractor is around seventy thousand dollars, so we're getting a second opinion, but these are the kinds of things that we're coming up against over and over again, so that's why we're here asking for your assistance on Union Steel. This is the fire burnout, right across from the Brandt Spink and New Luddington Center. It's one hundred South Superior. We had an environmental contractor earlier this year go in and tell us what it would cost to clean it out. That came back at ninety-nine thousand dollars, which caused me to choke a little bit. This is the Albion Manor site. It's currently owned by the county treasurer, soon to be owned by the land bank. It came through foreclosure this year. This is one that Brian has worked really hard on to try and find somebody to redevelop it. It's at one thousand West Erie, East Erie, East Erie. So that is another building that needs intervention, and that, that's really it. You know, you have an item on your agenda clearly for Union Steel with our ask. We're happy to answer any questions, but we just kind of wanted to set the tone for why we were making that ask and some of the work that we had done here. We had gotten a couple of questions about other big projects that we had done, and we just wanted to share that with you and be in the audience if you had any questions.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you. Is there any way that we could ask for an extension to try and find other partners to partner with us?
I'm not su, who else would we ask at this point?
I got a few people in mind, but, I mean, I don't want to put them on blast because they haven't made a commitment. I'm sure they're watching at home because I told them about it, so they're first-hand information from you, so thank you.
Councilwoman Brown?
Sorry. We're gonna discuss it under item A, councilmember, so I'm just asking that, can we wait until we get down there to have the discussion on that, but as far as the presentation of their questions?
So I think when we had our, our meeting here about a week ago or so, you shared with us some of the new financial challenges that you've had.
Correct. Yeah, so the governor has cut a lot of the funding that's coming into the county, so there is a budget deficit at the county level, which makes things tighter for everybody involved. The land bank doesn't have the funding to tear this down. We don't have a lot of money. We have a lot of property that needs a lot of intervention, and so we don't have the funds, and Brian has funded a lot in the past and is looking for a partnership. We would have to go and ask the county board of commissioners to support Brian putting funding in to this project, and we know that we can't do that if we don't have buy-in from, from Albion. The county commission, we had some funding that Brian had given us a few years ago that went into like some of the demos on the HHF grant here in the city of Albion, and we had a little bit left over with like fifty-six thousand, and so we know that we have that money, and we know that we have the EPA money to do the environmental assessments, which is already in process and working, so that money makes it easier for us to do the demolition because if we do find something, we can use it to help remediate those, that situation in some instances, not every instance, but it's been helpful in other demolitions where we found things like tanks and stuff like that.
Any other questions, council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is entrepreneurship and community service certificates for TNT Beauty Supply, Cuts By Moose, Charisma, and Mike and Brenda Lopez. So. Let me go. Councilwoman Brenna, you want to assist with this?
City of Albion Certificate of Recognition awarded to Mike and Brenda Lopez on achieving outstanding community service and for having a positive influence on the youth of Albion and surrounding communities with the annual bullying stop sphere event. Awarded this fourth day of November twenty nineteen by Dave Ashes and Mayor of the city of Albion and Councilwoman Sonny Brown. Please.
I just want to add, they recently did their sixth annual anti-bullying event at the bowling alley, and you go away.
With your head.
So the, the last thing, the event is, like she said, we do a free pizza and bowling Halloween event for children of the community of Albion and the surrounding areas for children fourteen years old and younger. We started doing it on our own, and it's picked up a lot of support throughout the years. Couple of you guys are probably still there, a couple of you aren't out here, so we're taking recognition today, but it's a community effort as of now, so we had ninety-two kids in it this year, ninety-sixty-eight kids our first year, so we plan to keep on moving forward with the same event, and eventually we'll pick up and do a Christmas party and other holiday party festivals. So.
Thank you.
Yes, you got a picture too.
Oh, come on.
City of Albion Certificate of Recognition awarded to TNT Beauty Supply on achieving outstanding entrepreneurship in the Albion community and for impacting our community by embracing the youth with the annual back-to-school event offering free hairstyles and school supplies to Albion students. Awarded this fourth day of November twenty nineteen by Dave Ashes and Mayor. Councilwoman Sonny Brown?
Thank you. Thank you.
City of Albion Certificate of Recognition awarded to Charisma on achieving outstanding entrepreneurship in the Albion community and for impacting our community by embracing the youth with the annual back-to-school event offering free nail decor and school supplies to Albion students. Awarded this fourth day of November, signed by Dave Ashes and Mayor. Councilwoman Brown? City of Albion Certificate of Recognition awarded to Cuts By Moose on achieving outstanding entrepreneurship in the Albion community and for impacting our community by embracing the youth with the annual back-to-school event offering free haircuts and school supplies to Albion students. Awarded this fourth day of November twenty nineteen by Dave Ashes and Mayor. Councilwoman Sonny Brown?
Thank you. Just quickly, I wanted to add that Charisma, Cuts By Moose, and TNT worked together, and they just did their second annual back-to-school event, so we want to encourage our young entrepreneurs and our young community members to, to, of course, give back to the community that you're a part of, and we're very proud and thankful for you all.
So we have no public hearings this evening. Public comments, this is for agenda items. Persons wishing to address the city council ask that you limit your comments to agenda items only, no more than three minutes. Proper decorum is required. Do we have public comments on agenda items this evening?
Hi, Evergreen Showers, eight oh five, the Hall of Drive. But I wanted to ask the people that just left from up here, I heard that the Darwimpel School was contaminated, the grounds. Is it?
I'm gonna go ahead and answer this. Yes, there is some contamination. It exceeds the allowable. It's been there probably when the school was built because the expected source of the contamination came from the old foundries and whatnot, and they used it as landfill. So that's, yes, there is contamination there, arsenic.
Is it, is it any danger to us bodily, like the Malibu? Because I know that's contaminated too.
If you were to sit there and eat the dirt and throw it up and create lots of dust and breathe it in, wouldn't be advised to do that, but other than that, city manager, do you want to add anything?
I can't tonight, but I can get you some additional information on it if you're interested.
I am.
Please see me or give your name and address and phone number to the clerk, and I'd be happy to follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay. Next item is the approval of regular session minutes from October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Is there any discussions? Okay. All those in favor of approving regular session minutes on the twenty-first, from the twenty-first of October, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Okay. Items for individual discussion. First item is discussion and approval of city of Albion to contribute funding for the demolition of Union Steel building. This is the presentation that was, we just listened to. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Discussion.
Support.
I'm sorry, I thought you already said support.
I don't know who said it first, but I'll take the support.
All right. Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, mayor. So to ask the question that I asked before, is there any way that we could possibly get a extension for this bid? And my advice to the council would be to set the priority here of things that are being torn down, what's needed the most, and I ask that you think about that. This Union Steel building has a lot of activity in it. As we saw in the presentation, there are people moving away from this building, which we want them to stay, and we want to recognize them and to let them know that we do value their homes. I've been on council four years. I get a lot of complaints about this building. There's music videos being done in there besides the cats. There are dog fights in there. People let their dogs go in there and fight the cats. So I'm just asking that we just do our, our due diligence on this project, but like I asked, is there any way that we could possibly get an extension on the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
I have a point, point of information.
Okay.
The motion, I heard so moved and second, but what exactly is the motion? Or is the motion to approve the city contributing the three hundred thousand dollars?
We haven't, we haven't set an amount, but the motion is to contribute funding, and I suspect that as we go through and discuss this, we may come up with a, an amount somewhat less than three hundred thousand with other methods to partner with the land bank and make this happen, because I think this is something that has been critically important and of great interest to every member on city council for quite some time and preceding members on council. So I'm hopeful that we'll have a discussion, we'll come up with an amount that we can reach consensus on and see if that will... can reach consensus on, uh, and see if that will enable us to achieve this. Uh, any other comments? Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. Um, I, I too, I guess, wonder, um, how, if the deadline for council's approval is fixed and, um, is it possible, um, to have, um, some adjustment there with the, uh, lowest bidder, um, for the project? I, I also wonder exactly, I don't, what was included, 'cause I know that there are, um, several ways of demolishing a building, and I don't know if one is cheaper than the other, but, um, I don't know if they can answer this, but was the bid based on, um, explosives or ball and chain or tearing down, or can you just help me?
Sure.
So, to restate the two questions, uh, one was, is it, can we get an extension, uh, beyond this week? And the second question is, what's the method, or what does the demolition entail? And my question that goes with that is, with this bid, which is the lowest bid, if it's approved, is there still going to be a concrete slab, or is that going to be removed as well? So, three questions.
Sure, um, we've already asked the demolition crew to extend their bid from August, so we are, you know, kind of at a point where we need to make a decision, and we've been talking with the mayor about this and the interim city manager for quite a while, but there was a transition going on at the city, obviously with Mr. McClary coming on, and so we wanted to, that was the main reason we asked for the extension, is we wanted to allow him to onboard and, and the city council to have some time to discuss this. Uh, the land bank has demolished, uh, many, many properties, not just in the city of Albion, but throughout the county, and it's basically, you use a backhoe to do that, you first abate the asbestos and any hazardous chemicals that are on site, and so when we do a house demolition or any other building, we do, uh, an asbestos survey and a hazardous material survey. So, if you're demolishing a house and there are tires in that house, or a mercury-containing thermostat, or a smoke detector, those are all considered hazardous materials and they have to be taken out of the structure before we allow, we're allowed to demolish it. And then the same for asbestos, we have to remove any asbestos before we do the demolition. The state does not require to remove things like lead or, um, mold, so we don't have to do that. Our demolitions are done with a wet demolition process, which means that they are constantly spraying so that we're reducing any, they call it fugitive dust, which is a term I always liked, but it means any dust that's being generated from that demolition, we're trying to control that, and so they spray it with water to do that. Um, and so that's the way that this one was bid out, we would be taking the slab out unless there's some environmental reason that we shouldn't take the slab out, um, so that's something that, we bid it out that way, but we are getting this additional testing to make sure. Um, some of our other sites that we have demolished that have had some contamination on them, it's, we've had to cap it, which is pretty typical, you just have to cap it with some other material, like grass works, some additional dirt and some grass, we just don't know exactly what's going on here. We were thinking we were going to bring the building down and then do that environmental testing, but because of the delay and because we had grant funds left over, we just wanted to go ahead and get some environmental testing done, so that's what we decided to do. Um, we have more data then when we're doing the demolition and we can make changes if we need to in that process, you know, there could be a change order depending on what we find, um, and that happens sometimes, but, you know, I think we have pretty good data on this particular site, and so we're bidding it the most efficient way that we can, to make sure that we are complying with all of the state requirements, and also that we're keeping the surrounding neighbor safe.
So, so did you answer, your answer to my question is you're just demolishing it, the walls are coming down, and then the floor, the floor and the ceilings and things like that, we're not doing explosive, maybe I missed your answer to my question?
Yeah, no, we, it's a backhoe, so typically use a backhoe and they knock it down, and then what they do is they separate it out, so anything that is recyclable, so there might be metal, there probably isn't a lot of metal left on this site, but, 'cause there, there was a lot of urban mining here, so they, they take out the metal, they recycle the concrete if it doesn't have any paint on it, so it's a, it's a, it's a backhoe demolition.
Oh, okay, my other, I'm sorry.
Councilman Williamson.
So, I was, I was, so I was curious, so I read this packet, and, um, the city manager provided, you know, the analysis of, you know, we could say yes, solve it and we're golden, we could say, uh, no, and then we're gonna still be stuck with an abandoned building potentially, or we could authorize a smaller contribution for the project. Has there, so, and I just learned now that this is an extension, so the current bid is an extension of a bid that expired in August?
It came in in August and we asked them to keep it open through November sixth, and, um, there's another step after we get a commitment from city council, we do have to take it to the Board of Commissioners, yeah, so, we don't want it to go too long because they have been gracious enough to leave, to let us keep their bid.
I just feel a little under the gun because November sixth is like a day away.
Yeah, I understand.
And, I just, I'm kind of confused as to why the project has languished a little bit on ours, that's nothing to do with what you've done, I'm just bringing, just making it known that it seems a little odd that we wouldn't know about this, you know, two months ago and probably brought it to us. So, um, the other, the other question I, um, had, because the city manager did not include, this might be more for Darwin, a kind of a recommendation on what type of action we should take, um, so have you, have you all met and talked about this project together, or has this been done kind of remotely?
We met last week, and so it was the first time that we met Mr. McClary, and then we had this big item to discuss, so.
Right, that's the difference.
So, thank you for meeting us and talking about this big project, um, so it's not the way that we wanted to meet him or, or to come in, but, you know, we've been trying to get this building down. We were hoping that we could get appropriation through the state, that was one of the other reasons why we did that demo, but then of course, the budget didn't go the way anybody had expected, and that clearly didn't happen, but, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, just from our end, uh, maybe this is for the city manager, but, um, so I see that, so we would be taking three hundred thousand dollars from our general reserve to put towards demolition, is this what our finance team has suggested, is this what you're suggesting? Um, because I feel like we're, we're, council's in a position to where we're kind of being asked to negotiate with the county, um, where, like, you should probably be doing that for us and bringing your recommendation, so I'm just confused.
Um, actually, uh, what the council is being asked to do is to determine whether this project rises to a level of priority, uh, for the council and for the community to contribute the full three hundred dollars, understanding that we only have, uh, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in, um, unrestricted general fund reserves. Uh, and, like I noted in my background brief, um, we have four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in unrestricted general fund reserves that we can use for any public purpose, any of our capital improvement needs, which council knows we have millions of dollars in capital improvement needs. Um, so the question to the council is, does this particular project rise to the, rise to the level of priority, uh, where you would utilize basically three-fifths of the, uh, available general fund reserves?
Well, what you have in here is that we would have four hundred and ninety-seven thousand post the three hundred thousand being extended, because there's one point three million, one point three-five-seven in the reserves, and then we need to keep sixteen to twenty percent, which is about six hundred and forty-five to eight hundred and sixty thousand.
Correct.
Leaving four ninety-seven behind after the expenditure of the three hundred thousand. Okay. I was just, I was wondering what your recommendation to council was about this, because this feels a little.
I don't have a particular recommendation, uh, other than to tell you that, uh, whatever dollar amount you allocate to this project, if the council chooses to, will be, uh, money that cannot be used for other needs of the city. And because I don't, I am not yet familiar with how important this project may be to the council, um, you may wish to allocate the entire three hundred thousand dollars to this project, or you may wish to allocate a, uh, smaller amount. I do believe that it's important for us to be, um, willing and good faith partners with the land bank authority, not only on this project, but on many of the projects that they are working on in, in our community. Um, they definitely, uh, do a great job for us and for the Albion community. Um, we need to be willing partners, but we do have limitations on what we can afford to do. Um, we, our general fund budget is, uh, four point three million dollars, um, and, uh, three hundred thousand dollars is a substantial portion of, of our budget, and I've already outlined for you the reserves that we have available, so, um, I, I was hoping that I set the parameters so that council could understand what our limitations are as you're making a decision on how important this project is.
Okay, so I want to clarify one thing, 'cause I may have misunderstood what you said, but the way you stated it, I don't think it's what, what the city manager intended. Uh, so our current reserves are one point three-five-seven million, and his recommendation is that we maintain between six hundred and forty-five to eight hundred and sixty thousand, uh, which leaves four ninety-seven, of which the three hundred would come out of that. Okay, all right.
So, what are you proposing we do?
Well, you're directing that question to the city manager?
Yeah. He just, he just said he didn't know.
So, your, the question that Councilwoman Reed just asked you is, so what are you proposing we do?
I have a comment. Right.
Well, if you'd just restate it.
Um, the first, the first motion, I do want to, I do want to note, the first motion is necessary if these monies are going to be allocated and spent in the current fiscal year, we are nearing the end of the fiscal year, uh, it sounded like this project, uh, the money would actually not be expended until the next fiscal year, so, um, so motion number one, uh, would not be necessary. Um, instead, the motion would be to direct us to include, uh, an appropriation in the fiscal year, uh, twenty budget. Um, the, the second motion is, uh, to allocate funding if the council wishes to allocate funds, and, um, I would, I'm concerned about, uh, allocating three hundred thousand dollars out of a four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar available, um, fund reserves. Uh, it leaves very little for us to do anything else, including some other projects that may come forward, uh, from the land bank authority and others. Uh, I, I think it's just a substantial hit to the community. I feel more comfortable with a contribution level of maybe somewhere around a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, and I, I would be comfortable with that, uh, that level of contribution. I hope that answers your question.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. Um, I, I know that, um, Union Steel is an eyesore and, um, Councilwoman Lawler has been, um, a cheerleader, champion for, to have that building demolished since taking seat on council. We've heard her too many times, numerous times, talk about demolishing Union Steel. And for me, I'd like to see some contribution from the city toward this project, um, as to the amount I think that it'll be for a council to determine. However, I was wondering, um, since we partner with, um, many entities and organizations in, within our community and outside, if, um, we could possibly get, um, a couple of additional partners to partner with us so that we would not have to absorb the bulk of the demolition expense. Um, I know that Union Steel is within the Albion College area and they, Albion College basically, well, they own the junior high, Washington Gardner, and Union Steel is directly behind it. I, I think for them, it might be something that they might consider, we should have a conversation with them, and possibly another partner, um, that has, um, um, wanted to help within our community, I don't know, Oaklawn is right there, part, at the old Munger building and Union Steel sits behind, so I think we, it, it, I don't know how we can go about this, but if we could have some conversations with some partners and we're not really, um, pressed for this deadline, I'd like to see us have some conversations and to see if someone would be helping, willing to assist us in, um, demolishing this building. My thoughts and opinions.
Your comments, Councilman Williamson.
I'm inclined to, uh, support it at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar level, um, just to make sure that the city does have a substantial skin in the game around the demolition, um, project, because I, I do agree, we want to be good partners, uh, but we also want to be good partners on a million other projects that need to be done within the city, so, um, I, the city manager kind of making that recommendation or that offer to the council, I think would, uh, be smart of us to move forward with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation to this project. We understand that this project may not move forward if there aren't other parties brought to the table, and I know that this is not our project control, but we should be contributing and be part of it, so, um, I do want us, I do want us to support a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution to the land bank.
Other comments by council? Okay, so I know that during our meeting, and I had a conversation, uh, with Mr. Gilbert, uh, that one possibility that the council could consider would be to come up with a, an initial amount, a hundred thousand, uh, and agree that over the next five years to make up the difference, uh, something along that line, that's another option, and that would provide us time to see if we can get partners to help us with that. So, I just wanted you to be aware that that was something that was discussed last week, uh, different ways to do this. Okay, so, any other discussion or questions?
Okay.
Okay? So, would you care to state your motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to the, uh, Union Steel project for the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority.
Is there support?
If I could ask for clarification, is this in line with motion number two?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, 'cause there were.
Forget that you did.
There were other things that, uh, we want to make sure we included in that.
Yes, let, so, I want to approve the contribution from the city to Calhoun County Land Bank Authority in the amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand, upon approval and execution by the city of an acceptable intergovernmental contract and receipt of invoices, acceptable to the finance director for the purpose, basically just number two in our packet here, it's a long, the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority, that, that motion number two.
So, it's been moved, is there support?
No question.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported, discussion on Mr. Gilbert, did you want to add something?
Mr. Mayor, Jim Dyer, I'm the Calhoun.
I apologize, I got your name wrong.
It's okay, Calhoun County Corporation Council. Um, yes, the discussion that, that we did have at our meeting is the possibility that through an urban cooperation agreement, we could extend the time that the city would have to pay the three hundred thousand dollar contribution requested. If the, um, uh, the motion was limiting the contribution of the city to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the entire project, the project probably will not be able to be completed. Uh, so, the, if, if we're going to enter into an urban cooperation agreement, it would be through, uh, a contribution of three hundred thousand dollars that we, as, and I indicated to you that we could have an initial amount of a hundred thousand dollars in the first year, and fifty thousand dollars for the succeeding, uh, four years, uh, beyond that, for a total of five years to give you the, that, that would give you five years of skin in the game, uh, if that's what you're, if that's what you're looking for, and I think that'd be a way to, uh, to give both parties what they really want, if you want this project to go forward.
Councilwoman Lawler.
I like his idea. Can I take my question?
I can rescind my motion if that's what needs to happen, if that's allowable.
Okay. Do you wish to rescind your motion?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes.
Okay, no problem, all right. So, considering what Mr. Gil, Gilbert, and again, I apologize for getting your name wrong. Jeez, I did it again. Mr. Dyer.
Sorry?
Okay. Uh, yeah, okay, so, based on the discussion we had from him, is there a motion?
I move.
Let me understand, because when I vote, I want to be able to know what I'm talking about.
Absolutely.
We're going with what Mr. Dyer suggested.
Yes, and what Mr. Dyer suggested was the city provide an initial amount of one hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty, and then pay the, the remaining balance at the rate of fifty thousand a year for the next five years.
Yes.
Oh, well, then he's great.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, it's been moved by Councilman Lawler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reed, discussion. Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, so I just wanted to ask city manager McClary, um, 'cause you're, you're, you're familiar with. with our general plan. I just wanted to know if you would speak to your thoughts on the motion that we're considering right now.
The proposal makes it easier for us to budget out this expense over a number of years. So the impact in any one year is less than paying it all upfront. We will still have to determine, because the motion was simply to make this contribution, we would still have to determine if we're going to be drawing those funds from fund reserves, or if we're going to try to accommodate the contributions as part of the general operating budget each year. And those are discussions we can have at budget time. I would assume that the initial 100,000 would probably come from general fund reserves. And then we may be able to program the additional 50,000 for the next four years into the operating budget.
Thank you.
Counselwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just dear to my constituents. So is there, like, if this passes down the line, are we able to fundraise, or can people get together and, you know, fundraise like they did the signs downtown to help contribute to this? Are we able to do that? Can a council member do that, or no? Somebody from the outside?
I am not aware of anything that would prohibit people from fundraising for this project and coordinating with the land bank authority to do that. I don't know if the city attorney has anything he'd like to add to that, but I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit them from fundraising, nor am I.
Counselwoman Williamson.
Okay, so I am inclined to support the full amount over that period of time. I do, I just have a real frustration, because we're kind of voting on things that are in, like, air right now. So, and there apparently was a discussion that took place about this being an option for the city, and we didn't have that information before tonight. So I'm feeling like I'm voting on something that I know is really good and really needed in the community, but is really, like, kind of ambiguous and not hard on paper. And so, you know, that could come back to bite us. So I really want Union Steel to be demolished. It's been vacant and dilapidated since before I was born. So as long as I've been in Albion, as long as that building has been a place for crime and cats and all sorts of other things. So I'm inclined to support it by, like, I'm just, and this is kind of my theme tonight, because it's been the theme for a couple of other things in the city lately. I'm really frustrated with the, with the way these things get communicated and get brought out to council, and almost like done to our head speed. So I know this is good. I'm inclined to vote for the 300,000 contingent on an arrangement with the land bank and the city about how that's going to get paid, because $50,000 hit to the budget each year makes a lot more sense. And then we're not completely hurting our general fund balance, which I view as this ability for us to grow and expand and, like, create things in the city and not just tear things down. But I'm hoping that we're going to be moving into a place where we're not always having the gun pulled to our heads at a city council meeting and then being asked to make decisions. You know, this is large for Albion, this isn't large for any other big municipality, but this is large for us. And so, again, hoping that that will be better.
Counselwoman Brown.
Thank you. So I do, I share Councilmember Williamson's frustration, and that's something that I've said during my tenure on council. But I just want to note that City Manager McClary was not here in August, so, you know, don't, we're not saying, you just started.
Okay.
Okay. You know, Union Steel is an eyesore. It's horrible. And I can support the 100,000 now and 50,000 over the next years, because that's less of a blow, and it's still, we still have money to address other capital needs of the city. I just want to be clear and sure that Attorney Harkness will be, when we get this in writing, it's going to be clear cut, and you'll be a part of that, correct?
Yeah, I'm assuming, I'll coordinate with Mr. Dyer's office on creating a mutually agreeable agreement that will come before council again.
All right, thank you. I have a question.
Counselwoman Spicer.
Thank you. So City Manager McClary, and possibly even Attorney Harkness, Councilwoman Lawler indicated she had some conversations with an entity or two that might be interested in providing funds for this project. How would that come into play if we tonight voted for the 100,000 upfront, and then the 50,000 every year for the next 50 years? How, could it be done faster, or what? How?
You want to respond to that? If there was a group that wanted to raise funds to assist with the project, it is going to reduce the, and if it's a city of Albion group, and if they wanted their contributions, their fundraising to offset the amount that the city has to contribute, then it would reduce the city's obligation by a like amount. So if you were able to raise 25,000 in funds, that would reduce the city's contribution by 25,000. If it was an outside group, that would be coordinated with the land bank authority, and the land bank authority and that group would determine how that, how that funding would impact the contributions from the entities. So it depends on who's raising the funds. But ultimately, it could impact the city by reducing the city's required contribution.
But not necessarily the time involved, the four years pending?
Well, our contribution is going to be over a five-year period, from what I understand, and based on the motion. And, but the work is going to move forward.
Okay.
Probably in the spring. Is that when? Yeah. So we would basically be reimbursing the land bank authority.
Okay.
Over a period of time.
Counselwoman Brown.
Thank you. So I just want to get an understanding about the budget, because I know my time on council, not every year do we have a surplus. Sometimes we dip into the general fund, but our fund balance has been healthy enough that it hasn't, you know, gotten us below the recommended 15 to 20%. So one of the things we need to think about is, are we generating enough revenue that we're gonna, that we're confident at the end of our budget year, we're gonna be in surplus, and we can come up with this 50,000? What I'm thinking is, over time, if we keep dipping, 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 and we have this obligation, it's just, it's worth thinking about. We need to be thinking about how to generate revenue for our general fund.
There are two questions you're asking. One is, how do we, how do we handle the contribution on an annual basis? And those are discussions we will have to have, and we will review. You are committing, if this motion passes, you are committing to a total of 300,000 to this project. If we sign a contract, we are obligated for that 300,000. We will have to determine on an annual basis how we're going to cover that contractual obligation, whether it, whether it is through continuing to draw from fund balance, or if we are able to accommodate it as part of the operating budget from the revenues from that particular year. So those are discussions we will have every year as we're moving through the process. But you bring up a good point about managing the budget, and whether or not we have, we end up having to draw down on reserves to fund our normal operations. And then, if I understand your question correctly, your concern is, will we in fact have the money that we think we're going to have to be able to pay this obligation? I can tell you that we are, we are, one of the recommendations we are making to the city council as part of this year's budget is to invest in the purchase order system, which will allow us to better manage the budget throughout the year, make the necessary budget amendments as we go along when we spend money, so that we are not, at the end of the year, trying to do a bunch of budget adjustments at one time, and then try to determine if we have enough money to balance out the budget, or if we have to draw from reserves. We will, if we purchase the purchase order system, it will require every department head and the city manager to be looking at the budget every time we make any type of substantial purchase. And the system will tell us, you don't have enough money in that account to make this purchase. You're going to have to do a budget amendment first, before it will let us move forward with the purchase. So it forces us to be thinking it on a continual basis, and we should always have the budget balanced, if that's the case. And if there is some unusual situation where we need a supplemental appropriation, we would have to come back to the city council and have that discussion. But we are working to get a much better handle on budget management.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mr. Reed, if you may be able to answer. In the last three years, what's the lowest percentage surplus has been there at the end of the year?
For percentage of fund balance?
Right.
Off the top of my head, I would say, at worst case, maybe 28%. I'm thinking probably closer to 30. And we've been pretty stable at that for a couple of different reasons. It's, everybody kind of gets hung up on that number a lot, that percentage, and it's not only just how you end the year, and what you're able, your accumulated earnings are able to add to that, or subtract from that fund balance. But the other issue that changes when you do a calculation like that, there's two numbers. I mean, you have your numerator and your denominator. So part of the reason we've been healthy is our total expenditures for many, many years have declined. So that's helped with our calculation. Not necessarily that the fund balance went up a lot, but our expenditures went down. We're to a point now where our expenditures are now increasing. That will affect our calculation a little bit, but we're still pretty healthy. We're still in that 30 to 35% range, depending on, you know, on any given year, how we end.
Counselwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to speak to the fourth precinct. I am in support of the recommendation that was given by Mr.?
Dyer. Dyer.
Dyer?
Yes.
Okay. And so my vote for that would be yes. I will be out trying to talk to the college, the Oakline, Cronin Foundation, fundraising, firekeepers, if they have other grants. I'm really dedicated to this project, and I assure you that I will do everything that I can, whatever I can do. Second was to Mr. McClary. I chose you for what you can do for our city. I've seen how you created a huge fund balance for previous employers that you've worked for. I'm not a mean person, but I'm going to be on you about trying to find some money to get this building torn down, anyway I can. I would never be mean to you, but I'm going to be firm about it. Probably every time I see you, I will probably have something to say about Union Steel. So it was your qualification, and I truly believe that your qualification can raise our fund balance. So that is something that I wanted you to know, that that was, I know you can do this. I know you can. I know you can do this. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, you're very welcome. Okay. The last thing that I wanted to say is, it's regretful you feel like you have a gun held to your head. This was, this very topic, very same presentation was on the agenda for the Calhoun County Land Bank to come in and brief us six weeks ago, I think, a month and a half ago. And that was part of the package that went out to the council, were the communications to the city manager and myself, which laid out the request. And that was in the package that went out. But there were a couple of different reasons why Calhoun County Land Bank did not come to brief us. And I said that I think we're in the process of bringing on a city manager, and one of the things that we're all going to be looking at as we go through that is the ability to do budgets and long-term planning. And I think it's in the city's, told them I thought it was in the city's best interest to make sure that our new city manager was part of that discussion. And they agreed. So if there is something that should have been said before, it was in the, on the council's, on the agenda, and there was information provided at council. The discussion I had with Mr. Dyer was this afternoon, oh, a few hours before our council meeting. So this isn't something that I've been sitting on. So, any other comments by council? Councilwoman Brown.
Just a question. Was Mr. McClary involved in, included in the meeting with Mr. Dyer?
I had a phone call with Mr. Dyer, so no, it was a one-way between he and I. But this creative, or think outside the box, yes, Mr. McClary was involved in that, as was Councilwoman Reed and Councilwoman Lawler at our meeting last week.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, seeing no other questions. So would you please read the roll? And what we're voting on is for the city to fund in 2020, 100,000. The city manager will advise us where that's coming from, but he's telling us right up front that it will almost assuredly come from the general fund reserve, and then follow it up with an additional 50,000 a year for the next five years. And where that money is coming from will be discussed at a later point.
For the next four years.
Four years or five years?
For the subsequent four years.
Okay. You are correct. It is four years. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could also clarify, so, but the rest of, are we including the rest of the language from the original motion, though, to require an intergovernmental agreement?
Yes. Okay. Any questions by council for further clarification? Okay, Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes, but I'm so confused, because, I'm sorry. We had a motion without a dollar amount, right? And then we changed it. He retracted his. Parliamentarily, what I'm saying, Attorney Harkness is, what, what?
I thought there was, he rescinded. I thought there was another motion made for the 100,000 with the additional 50,000 that was seconded.
Right. But the original motion that I asked about, it was, no dollar amount was attached, but we discussed, and then there was the amendment that included the 100,000 plus the 50.
Which he rescinded.
No. So the original?
So who made the original motion?
It was a support and a second. And I said, well, what is the motion? And Mayor explained that there was no dollar amount attached to the motion, but as discussion went along, then we would probably determine a dollar amount, which we have, and we've done that. He rescinded his, but when that 100,000 motion with the 50,000 was made, that was an amendment to attach a dollar amount to the original motion that was made, it didn't have one.
So, simple solution here. Vote to approve the amendment, vote on the entire thing.
Okay. So the vote is to approve the amendment. Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay, so we've approved the amendment, and now would you please read the roll to approve the motion?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson? Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay. Okay, next item. Mr. Dyer?
If I could clarify, when I, when I did call you this afternoon, it was after having spoken to Mr. McClary, who gave me permission to speak to you. I would normally not speak directly to an elected official without the permission of the city manager, and that was, that was absolutely, absolutely given, and I appreciate it. The process that we've gone through has been very helpful, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well, I think you've made a good hire, and I hope to work very long with Mr. McClary.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is request approval, the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2019-08, and ordinance to create chapter 100, article 1, sections 1.1 through 1.3. Article 2, sections 2.1 through 2.2. Article 3, sections 3.1, 3.19. Article 4, sections 4.1 to 4.13. Article 5, sections 5.1, 5.11. Article 6, section 6.1 through 6.6. Article 7, 7.1 through 7.26. Article 8, sections 8.1 through 8.5. Article 9, sections 9.1 through 9.15. And Article 10, sections 10 through 10.8. This will incorporate all of the, the updated zoning ordinance. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there support?
Seconded.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion. City Attorney Harkness.
I'd just say, there's just, it, it won't affect the ordinance, just in the title, at the top of the ordinance, it should be section of 10.1 to 10.28. The actual language of the ordinance reflects 10.1, but just, as clarification in the title.
Okay. Are there questions by council? Seeing no questions, Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll, please?
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay. Next item. Request approval, the first reading of ordinance 2019-09, and ordinance to amend chapter 1, section 1 to 8, ethics. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Okay. So, it's been moved and supported, discussion. And I'd ask City Attorney Harkness to give an overview of the change or the amendment.
So, I had a request to, this, this brought up at a previous council meeting, where there was a request to change the subsection and subparagraph 2 regarding notice of violations of the ethics ordinance. I've inserted the requested amended language, which is the final sentence in that paragraph, and then there was a change made to paragraph 12. There was a conflict between paragraphs 12 and 13. One said majority, one said supermajority of amendment that reflect majority so that they're consistent. Those are the only two changes to the ordinance.
Okay. Questions by council? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. I don't have a question, I just have a statement about the amendment. The last sentence, it's saying that the hearing shall occur within 30 days of the date that the three council persons notify, those it requires to notify. I would just, I, I would support this if it said the hearing shall be scheduled within the 30 days, because to, for, the way it's worded, you have 30 days to get witnesses or whoever else you may, you know, want to appear and testify at the hearing. I think there definitely needs to be a timeframe. I just, for me, I would feel more comfortable if the wording were that the hearing, within 30 days after these people being notified, you have a hearing date, not necessarily that the hearing will be within the next 30 days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions by council? So, recommendation from Councilwoman Brown would be to make that other modification to the language. Any other comments by council? So, if we want to make that change, to use that language, what do we need to do?
You'd have to do an amendment, but I, I think I'd just offer a suggestion.
Okay.
I, I certainly don't have a problem with Councilwoman Brown's suggestion, but, and I, and I think it can make sense, but what I would, what I would suggest is to put some kind of tail end on it, that if you're going to schedule a date, I think it should still be scheduled within a, a window of time, you know, not, not to exceed a certain time period, because what you don't want to have happen is, part of the idea with putting a timeframe is to make sure that the complaints are dealt with in an expeditious manner, and so you don't want to have a situation where somebody gets scheduled, say, four months from now.
Right.
So, I would say, if you, if you make that change, puts some kind of a, a tail end on it, whether it be not, not to exceed 90 days from the date of the request for hearing or, or something along those lines. I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion.
Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. So, Attorney Harkness, I do, I, I take your point, and I agree with that. I would suggest that the wording, well, I move that, the last sentence, that we amend the original motion to include a modification that says that a hearing shall be scheduled within 30 days of the date, but not to exceed, I would say, 60 days. It's my recommendation.
Okay. Is there support for the amendment, the amendment to the ordinance?
Support.
Support.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, all, if you would read the roll, all those in favor, we're going to read the roll here to amend the ordinance as Councilwoman Brown suggested, which is to schedule the hearing within 30 days of those individuals being notified and not to exceed 60 days.
So, I guess the, the wording that I would suggest specifically that it be scheduled within 30 days of the date of notice and be held at more than 60 days from the date of notice, and just specifically reference the date of the notice.
Okay. So, if you would read the roll, please?
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. All right. Request approval of Consumers Energy easement for electric facilities at 111 and 113 East Erie Street. May I have a motion?
So moved.
For support?
Seconded.
Okay. Discussion. Okay. I know it's in here. City Attorney, could you just give us a quick overview on the easement?
This is just a standard utility easement. We've had these from Consumers Energy in the past. I review it, there's nothing particularly unique about it, just provide standard language that they can enter the property to service their equipment within the easement area. It's, we're, we're prohibited from planting anything in the easement area that would obstruct their access to the property, things of that nature. We've done several of these before. This is consistent with the previous easements that we've done, so I don't see any reason why the council couldn't move forward on that.
Okay. Questions by council? Okay. Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay. Next item is request approval of the first reading of ordinance 2019-10, and ordinance to amend chapter 22 to add article 6, sections 22 through 220, through 22, 227, collection bins. Okay. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there support?
What?
Okay. Discussion. Would you walk us through it, City Attorney Harkness, please?
Sure. So, as the council recalls, we talked about collection bins at a previous meeting. I brought to the council one of the municipalities that had done a more recent ordinance was the city of Lansing. The reason I chose that as an example is there was a federal court case that came out of the Sixth Circuit, I want to say roughly early 2015, a municipality had enacted an ordinance that completely banned collection boxes, and the Sixth Circuit Federal Court said that that was a violation of the First Amendment. So, what Lansing had done is, is they made it more of a time, place restrictions on, on the boxes and instituted a permitting process. So, I have used large portions of their ordinance as, as to create ours. There were some changes, but largely, it requires information about the individual organization that's placing the box, so that when we run into issues, if we need to contact them, we have that information. Chiefly, that's when you see the bins overflowing and creating kind of a nuisance to the surrounding area. I think that's the problem that has, has really sparked this. It provides standards for, you know, they, they have to be maintained, they can't be rusty and falling apart, they can only be a certain size, they have to come and empty them, things of that nature. One thing I did want to point out to council, in section 22 dash 223, the city of Lansing more or less allowed these almost everywhere. I, I spoke to our John Tracy, our, our planning department, and because the city had just redone the zoning, what we put in there was that they could be in the light industrial, the heavy industrial, and just the commercial district to obviously avoid having them in the residential areas, avoid having them in the downtown area, things like that, so they can be in commercial, industrial, but we didn't want to see these sitting on, you know, some, on the edge of somebody's backyard or something like that. And then, we have a process in place where, in the event that an organization or individual is not complying with this, they can have their permit revoked, and we've built in an enforcement process for that. There's additional penalties, there's an appeal process to council, but I think it's a good starting point to try to keep the owners of the bins in line, make sure that they're only where they should be, and hopefully we can start to curtail the issues that we've been having with those.
Okay. Any questions, comments by council?
No, just clarifying.
Councilwoman Spicer?
Just the clarification, it's just, this is just speaking to those bins, those blue or gray or whatever they are, that people are supposed to put clothes in that have everything else around, okay, like I need, all right, thank you. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Okay. All right. Mr. Domingo, would you read the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay.
The one thing I did want to add to council on that was, for the one, for the bins that are in the city currently in place, for those that are either in a location that we have not approved, once this becomes effective, or who have their bin out of sorts, I'll say, they have 60 days to bring their bin into compliance. And I, I built that into the ordinance.
Next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Any council, Councilwoman Williamson?
I'd like an update on recreation and all the programming that's happening there, and I shared with Mr. McClary some concerns I had earlier this week around sponsorships of local events and parties and things like that, and so I would just like an update on what's going on in recreation, and, you know, their website needs some work, and I just want to know what's going on with recreation.
Okay. Now, the council members have items they want to identify for future agendas. City Attorney Harkness? Anything specific?
Uh, second reading of this ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I have three items. One is a follow-up on the tax issues that the nonprofits here, there were some issues and concerns, so I'd like to see where we are with that, and any nonprofits that are having specific issues and struggles, if you could reach out to the folks in, in your precincts, the nonprofits that you're aware of, just to see if they have any other issues or if, if something hasn't been resolved, so that we can provide that information, if council members would provide that information to the city manager, then he can make sure that that's addressed at our next council meeting, when we talk about that with an update. Okay. We need to move forward and set goals and objectives, performance goals and objectives for the city manager. So, I'm going to talk separately with the, with the city manager, haven't had a chance to discuss it, and ask him what his desires and intentions are, and I don't know if you want to do another study session dedicated to goals and objectives, or we put it on the next agenda item, or next agenda. And then last is a reminder that we have a budget meeting discussion, work session with council on Saturday, the 16th of November, starting at 9:00 a.m., scheduled to go, if I remember correctly, 2:00 p.m. Okay. Okay. Public comments. People wishing to address the city council, please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Proper decorum is required. No personal attacks or impugning people's motives. Do we have public comments this evening?
Antonio Nelson, 28555C Drive here in Albion, Michigan. Specifically about the topic of, around Union Steel, is there any particular plan for that area after that has been demolished? I wasn't here, like, for the first few minutes, so I do not know, but I'm just wondering, are there any, like, plans for the future?
Okay. So, we'll make notes of the questions and then give the council an opportunity to respond to you.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, after the comments.
After the comments here.
We, we can't engage you in dialogue. Go right in on your questions, and then before the evening's out, we'll respond to Are there any other further comments before we ask the city or the county commissioner?
Good evening, council. My name is Emily Smith, and I have had the opportunity to serve as the Americor Vista here at City Hall for the last 15 months. I just wanted to thank the community. Albion has been a great community to serve in for the last 15 months as part of the Build Albion Americor Vista initiative. There have been challenges, there have been growth opportunities, and there have been celebrations along the way, and I'm so thankful to be part of this and have been part of this. The Build Albion Americor Vista initiative brought together a unique group of people that definitely got to serve a unique town. Albion is pretty great in so many ways, and you may not have directly seen us since, since Vista is built on building capacity. So, you may not have seen us, but you may have seen me around town, like, with my phone. I was not playing Pokemon Go. I wasn't. I really wasn't. I was collecting data. I've had the opportunity to work with the GIS system, and I, as Director Tracy can say, I can talk about it for a while. And, and GIS Day is Wednesday, November 13th. Just put that on your calendars, it is a thing. And, like I've said, Albion is so full of hidden gems, and I've had the opportunity to work in, to serve, sorry, correct terminology, in this community for this time, and I just really wanted to say a heartfelt thank you to you as council, and the mayor, and now city manager, and everyone else who's been involved in this journey. I greatly appreciate it, and I just want to say thank you, Albion.
Thank you. Councilman Reed?
And I'd like to say you all have been absolutely fantastic. I've had the opportunity to work with some of you and seen what you've done, you've been great. Thank you.
If there's no other further comments, we'll close, oh, we do.
Nidia Wolf, 409 Irwin Ave. Forgiveness is a commandment from God to all those who love Him. Sonya Brown, I forgive you.
Thank you.
Marcola Lawler, I forgive you. Jeanette Spicer, I forgive you. Garrett Brown, I forgive you. I have learned that you will heal yourself when you learn to forgive those who have wronged you and done harm to you, and when you forgive yourself for the mistakes you have made. This does not mean- This does not mean that I will forget, but that I will not have pain when I remember what has been done. For whatever reason, misleading information has been repeated during city council meetings and out in public to damage my reputation and impugn my integrity. The source of this misleading information is Joe Domingo. Joe Domingo, I forgive you for bearing false witness against me. However, the people of this community know me, they know me well enough to know that the information put forth was not the total truth. I will rise above these attacks. Each of you needs to ask yourself, is what you are sharing with the public pleasing to God? I think not.
Any further public comments this evening?
Garrett Brown, ten sixteen South Superior Street, Albion, Michigan. A question and then a quick comment. I know there was discussion at one point with the council about codifying the ordinances and getting that up to date with Muni Code, but I hadn't heard that, so I was just wondering what the status of that is, if that's going up, is that still going on? And then, up until when will that be accurate? So, that's the question. And then, just to remind residents of Third Precinct, an election's tomorrow. I think the polls are open from seven to eight, seven AM to eight PM. An important election. I think that how we arrived at that election is questionable, and, but I think that people will have the opportunity to make their voices heard, but I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the hard work of Mayor Pro Tim Brown, Sonya Brown, and her commitment to our children in the schools, to the city, to her commitment to excellence in governance here and making sure that things are done in a decent way and in line with the rules which are not meant to be a hindrance, but are meant to make sure that there's civil debate and discussion and that people know that, that we're actually arriving at the best possible policy outcome for the city. Yeah, I just want to say thank you, and let's remind people to vote tomorrow. So, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further public comments, I'll close that and invite County Commissioner Tompkins to come forward.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, council members, City Manager McClary. Clark Domingo, residents of the City of Albion, and folks watching this evening, good evening. Gary Tompkins, your county commissioner, and my last name is not Gilbert, just so you know that.
Nor is it Dyer.
You always gotta put a little, interject a little, a little good time into it, exactly. So, absolutely. Well, it's great to be with you folks each and every month. A couple of things I want to touch base with you this evening, unfortunately, they're not really good things, unfortunately, which is kind of unusual for me, but, you know, that's just the way things are. First of all, I want to talk about the two thousand twenty budget cuts that we've seen with respect to the governor and the one million dollars with the vetoes that were put forth. And again, as I think I told you before, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I just would have hoped that there would have been some progress made to where they would have sat down and had some conversations with each other. Unfortunately, we're not seeing any of it right now. The unfortunate thing, like I said, it's about a million dollar impact to Cowan County, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our sheriff's department, so it's significant. And everybody at some point in time gets impacted, whether it's a job or whatnot, certainly at the county. So, again, my only request is to the state legislators and the governors to sit down and have some honest conversations with each other and not lob things at each other, but just really have some good conversations. You know, passing supplemental bills, just for the sake of passing a supplemental bill doesn't solve the issue. We've got to do better than that, and certainly our citizens, all of us in the state of Michigan, deserve and expect that from our, from our leaders. So, just something there to be had on. So, real quickly, this Thursday, we and the county commissioner, we were voting on a request from the Parks and Rec Committee to put a point two, two-tenths millage on the ballot for March twenty twenty. This proposed point two mill tax increase would raise an estimated seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in Cowan County, which it also proposes within the language that it's a split fifty-fifty between Cowan County and the local municipalities, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars apiece. What basically you'd see with the City of Albion in this case would be about twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars, because the fifty percent that would be divided amongst the municipalities is population-based in Cowan County. So, again, there's a variety of things certainly that the, the population-based allocation would be able to do. However, I bring it to your attention because, again, it's something that I'm always looking for input from you folks on, and I think it's important that as a servant to you, to my constituents, I always want to hear from everybody's, everybody's point of view. I'll be honest with you, I've heard positives and I've heard the negatives. From any time we talk about tax increases, that's as significant for anybody. That's something everybody needs to take a hard look at and really determine if that's something we want to move forward with. But please understand that this Thursday's meeting is, or this Thursday's vote is only to potentially put it on the ballot. Obviously, if it were to go on the ballot, it's, it's obviously the constituents of Cowan County would have the final vote in that. So, but again, I'm looking for input, so afterwards, if you want to share your thoughts with me in terms of what you think it's a good idea or a bad idea, I would certainly appreciate it, because again, I think it's important. I've had many organizations, several organizations already contact me and many, many residents. I've been polling not only municipalities, but also the townships as well, so I get a really good sense of exactly where everybody stands on things. So, again, just something for you folks to take into consideration as we move forward with that. My monthly newsletter, as most of you folks do get it each and every month, it's a great resource to know what's going on in around the Seventh District. It's available here at the Albion Public Library. From a hard copy standpoint, if you're interested in getting it by email, please shoot me an email, and I'll get you hooked up on a monthly basis for it. In this month's newsletter, again, we're gonna talk about millages and taxes, which is always something, because we just recently approved our two thousand nineteen apportionment report, which basically lays out all of the, the tax and jurisdictions and all the millage rates for the coming year. On page five and six, we talk about the changes for two thousand nineteen for millages as it relates to the different areas. With page six, we detail the highest and lowest millages in Cowan County. As relates to the City of Albion, actually, you're gonna see your millages will have risen overall about point three five nine five mils in two thousand nineteen, so you'll be seeing that. So, you'll be at about forty-seven point nine three three seven mils for the City of Albion. And also too, just as a reminder, Albion has the fourth highest millage rate in Cowan County and the highest millage rate in the Seventh District. But that's, again, that's just information for you folks to know. Again, when we talk about decisions we have to make, because all of you guys, as we talked about this evening with the, certainly with the demolition of Union Steel and whatnot, we always have to look at all of the things and take everything into consideration, and me wanting to make sure that you folks are all aware of what exactly is going on so that you know exactly what's happening. So, also on page four, I just detail my White House visit, just to give you some details of exactly what took place at that county commissioners' conference that I went to as well. And then finally, I'm just kind of on a downer today, we gotta talk about something positive, but I haven't been able to find anything yet, so we just gotta find something here. But unfortunately, here we go. Update on road funding. You folks know that I've been heavy on this road funding, and I keep hitting it hard and continue and continue and continue. Some of you might have known, I might have been on TV a little bit here recently, as some of you might have seen. But it's all about for the cause, because again, I represent you folks. And when I see that my constituents aren't being taken care of and they're really not being given an opportunity to succeed, that's a problem for me. So, with that being said, this past Tuesday on WJR, they have their news programs on there, and there was a senator by the name of Pete Lucido who was on there. He represents Gross Point Shores, southeast corner of, you know, on that side of the state regarding Act Fifty-One, because he himself thinks that Act Fifty-One's a bad thing. However, I will tell you, he wants to change it, but unfortunately, in a disturbing way. He wants to change the, how the funding formula is, but in the complete opposite direction of rural communities like ourselves here in Cowan County would certainly benefit from. He cites a number of the vehicles, population, and lane miles as his reasoning for changing it, and he believes that, that the large metro areas are the ones that are getting the short end of the stick. And we know as well here in Albion that we are certainly getting, getting the short end of the stick when it comes to road money, we all know that. So, he knows he can't get it through the legislature, so he's not even gonna use that approach, but he intends to launch a ballot initiative to get the southeast Michigan, Flint, and Grand Rapids more funds through Act Fifty-One. He also calculates, interesting enough, that he can get enough yes votes to outweigh any outstate votes and pass the ballot language. Now, it's a serious issue when we talk about ballot language, because remember, any referendum that would be passed by the voters, the legislature can't do much with it other than if there was another corresponding referendum to change it. So, he's very serious about it, and I think we have to be very serious about the proposal that I put forth and really, really, really go after this and make a difference, because we need to make sure our legislators don't put us in a position where the large metro areas are getting all the funding. And then when our, our residents here in the City of Albion and certainly in the Seventh District are just stuck with, well, sorry about your luck, you know, pass five, six, seven, eight more mils in your, in your, in your areas to get your road fixed, and that's not the way to do it. So, again, I, I bring that up because it's a serious situation now, because now we've got other folks that are talking about it in the state potentially, but talking about it for what I would say all the wrong reasons. Because if you'll notice in that communication, Senator Lucido never mentioned Albion in his comments, and that's a problem. So, again, I think it's something we're going to, with that being said, my next, I'm gonna give one last chance to our legislators. And unfortunately, as much as I put it out there, I hear nothing but crickets among our legislators, which is the unfortunate thing. And I'm looking out for anybody, governor, you name it, anybody, come talk to me. So, with that being said, I'm gonna be passing out cards to constituents. Call your legislators, I got the phone numbers here, I got a little message you can give to them, tell them to contact me, because if you really want change to happen, it's gotta come through who are the most important and have the most power, and it's you folks, the voters, have the most power when it comes down to it. They will listen to you. But at some point in time, we've got to change it, we cannot allow a ballot initiative to get on there to where Grand Rapids, Flint, and southeast Michigan gets all the money, and we're just stuck where we're at, and we'll still be talking about this fifty years from now. So, with that being said, I have cards here, if anybody wants one, please take it, call your representatives, push the envelope on them, because you know what's sad about it is, is they all seem to be scared. You would think, you would think that there's some scary boo-boo boogeyman that's in the other corner, because every time you talk about it, they're running clear to the other end of the building, and they don't, nobody wants to talk about it. So, I don't know why the fear is there. So, again, maybe they're all looking at me tonight going, what are you talking about? We're not fearful. Well, come talk to me and tell me why you're not fearful of it, and tell me why we can't change, for the benefit of certainly my constituents, but for their constituents as well. And we gotta make sure that whatever we do is, is equal to that, so that everybody gets a fair shot at this. You know, we're all important no matter where you live, I don't care if you live in Grand Rapids, Flint, Albion, or wherever, we all deserve to have a chance to succeed. So, that's where it's at. So, I just want to give you that, and again, that's just me coming from finding any way I can to get people motivated to get out there. Now, maybe the next initiative is a ballot initiative. We may, if we have to come to that point, maybe that's what we do. But at some point, we've got to change what we're doing, because right now, we know there's no ideas right now in Lansing. There just isn't, and that's the sad part. We expect a lot from our folks, and that's what we expect them to come up there and do, is to be our, to represent us when we have issues. And right now, it's not happening, at least from the road funding, it's not. Instead, we're, we're putting bills on the floor, talking about deer baiting and deer feeding. That's the topic of discussion right now in Lansing to be voted on. There's a lot more problems, and no disrespect to the deer feeding and baiting situation, but honestly, folks, you guys all know that, because you guys drive on these every day, there are a lot more issues that are more important certainly than that at this point in time. So, with that being said, it's always great to be with you folks each and every day. See, I try to end it on a positive note, we got good stuff, right? But again, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna quit until they, I don't know, they'll find a way to silence me or whatnot, but we're gonna continue to fight the fight, because I can tell you that my constituents are certainly worth it. So, with that being said, thank you folks very much, and if you are interested in the card, come see me, come contact me, and I'll get you the numbers, and we'll make sure we, we get it taken care of. All right? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
City managers' report.
Your Honor, members of council, you've received the city manager's report from, from There are, there are a few things I wanted to note from the manager's report. First of all, the amendments to the city manager's employment agreement that were approved by council have been executed. I did note that there was another amendment that was on the agenda. I do not intend to seek an amendment to the moving expense provisions. We did find out that, that the moving expense reimbursement is taxable, so it's treated as income, and it is taxed, but it will stay at the eighty-five hundred dollar level. I provided you with a breakdown of some of the meetings that I have attended over the past couple of weeks. I noted the fiscal year twenty twenty budget preparation, and there is a work session scheduled for Saturday, November sixteenth, the mayor already mentioned that. I attended the two thousand nineteen ICMA Annual Conference in Nashville. It was a wonderful conference, the largest-attended ICMA conference in its history, and ICMA is now over a hundred years old. We had over five thousand five hundred attendees, so it was incredible. A little too many people for, for my taste, but anyway. I also, during the conference, received my ICMA credential manager designation, which I had, thank you. Thank you very much. I provided you with, with the results of our meeting with the landbrake authority on the Union Steel property. I have started receiving calls. These calls were from the Albion Community Gardens, Inc., regarding the properties that they own and the fact that they have now been placed on the tax rolls after, what I understand, had been treated as tax-exempt in the past. Our assessor determined that those properties are not eligible for tax exemption under the General Property Tax Act. We are getting a meeting set up with them to talk to them some more about their questions, and our assessor will be there to, to answer their questions as well. But the Property Tax Act is very specific as far as how tax-exempt property is to be treated, who is eligible to have tax-exempt property. And so, we will, we will sit down, we will talk to them about that, and hopefully answer the questions that they have. I understand that they are, they are scheduled to go before the Michigan Tax Tribunal in December on this issue, so they have been going through the process, the proper process. I provided you with an update on the Irwin Avenue reconstruction project and Precinct Three election. The, the roadway will be open for the election tomorrow. We do try to encourage voters to use Finley to get to Irwin Avenue to the church, the polling location. We would prefer that you not use the other end of Irwin Avenue, because it is under construction and is not in the best of shape, although the contractor was supposed to have it graded today so that it is in drivable condition if people do want to drive down that end of Irwin Avenue. But the roadway will be open, we will have flag people out there to help direct traffic, answer questions that people have on how to get to the polling location. So, there will be assistance out there if you should need it on, on getting directions on how to get to the polling location. We are asking that people use two of the driveways to enter the property, and then the third entrance would be used as an exit to get back onto Irwin Avenue and, and out to Finley. But, and there will be signage around to help people as well. So, we're hoping that, that Precinct Three sees a smooth and easy access to the polling location, and we sincerely apologize for the inconvenience that this late construction is causing. And just a final note, I am moving into my new home tomorrow, contractors willing, because they are still, they were working on the house tonight as I came to the meeting, so, but, but as far as I know, I am moving in tomorrow. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you so much.
Okay. Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Williamson, Councilmember Brown, City Manager McClary, Mayor Etchison, Councilmember Reed, and Councilmember Spicer for the confirmation for Union Steel. I'm excited, I did have to step out for a minute, but that's one thing that you would probably know about me, I get emotional about stuff. But... But I'm thankful for that. The young man asked what was the plan for the property of Union Steel. I just want to let him know that I did do a survey of what my precinct would like to be, see there. A lot of them said an, an event center, you know, where we can host big events there. Some said a small park like Collaboration Corner that's next door to Big B Coffee. Some said a skateboarding center for people that like to skateboard, but they definitely didn't like the idea of putting seniors there because they knew that there was contamination there. So as of right now, we don't have a plan that I know of, of what can be put there and I think we will know more after the November fifth assessment of what can go there and what can't go there. And I'd like to call previous.
Do council members have comments this evening? City Attorney Hartness?
There is a question from the audience about the codification of ordinances. They have been, just so the public and the council are aware, codified through ordinance two thousand eighteen oh eight, which was enacted November nineteenth of last year and that online content was updated this past July. So we're current through the end of two thousand eighteen, which is a vast improvement from being current through two thousand eleven.
Comments by council members? Okay, I'll make my comments fairly short. I echo the ask that everybody in precinct three go vote. And I would suggest that and encourage everybody to contact our county commissioner to get one of those cards to follow up, because we, we definitely need to have more road funding and the way it's being done is just historically not supporting the needs of our community. So with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, thank you very much. Okay, next item is motion to excuse absent councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, may I have a motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now may I have a motion to adjourn? Support?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Adjourn.